March twenty fifth, two thousand fourteen, study meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. Meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city planning consultant, although I think Mr. Carlisle is not here this evening. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefits of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, but not through anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. This is Arne Keeler, the roll call, please.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krenn?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shapki?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Strad?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Schultz?
I am.
Remove the agenda prepared.
Thank you.
Mr. Tagle, support.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strad?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Next is the approval of the minutes of March eleventh, two thousand fourteen, break the remaining. May I have a resolution? Mr. Gottlieb, thank you. Support?
Second.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strad?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
The next agenda item is public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wants to speak for the two items not on the agenda? Seeing that, we'll move on to the agenda item number five, the zoning board of appeals, ZBA report. Mr. Krenn?
We had two items on our agenda, and both variances were approved. One involved a lot split. The required width of the lot was eighty-five feet. The variance was for two point six five feet, and we allowed that considering the size of the lot. And the other was a multiple variance for the Walsh College. One is a setback variance, and one was a height variance. Both were approved, and that just brings me, if I may have thirty seconds, to say again, we need to look at our ordinances. The reason I'm saying that is the house next door to the college is allowed a thirty-foot height. The college itself is only allowed twenty-five foot. So it kind of was kind of strange to me that a residential home would have a higher limit than a community's facility. So I think that's one thing we could look at. The other thing was a setback. That, the college is located in a zoning area called Community Facilities, and the requirement for setbacks for all community facilities is fifty feet except for places of education greater in, what do they call it, after high school, in other words, a college level.
Post-secondary.
Post-second, thanks, that's the word I was looking for, post-secondary school. And I'm wondering why have we, did we decide when we wrote that ordinance to single them out as an extra thirty-feet setback compared to all other community facilities? So I will be preparing a report and bring it to the zoning board, and from that discussion that the zoning board will bring it back to this commission.
Sounds like things we didn't need to take up in the master plan or the zoning.
Especially given that having such a high setback requirement doesn't make sense when the height requirement isn't high. It's counterproductive.
Any other questions on the CPA report? Number six is the downtown development authority report. Brett?
There was no DDA meeting this month. However, there is a joint DDA and city council meeting at six P M. next Monday, April seventh.
Number seven is the planning and zoning report. Is that you?
That's me. I have nothing really specific to report. We're still waiting for an application. I'm eagerly anticipating is the DMC, the children's facility here at the corner of, I think we were just next to City Hall here. We're getting potential applicants kicking the tires on assisted living facilities. It seems to be something we're going to be seeing more of. I really can't get into any details right now because we don't have any applications, but I think we can anticipate to have some applications in the not-too-distant future.
We're all getting older.
We're all getting older.
Questions for us? When DMC does come in, do you think there's any chance that they could have their entrance or would be willing to have their entrance off Civic Center as opposed to Big Beaver so that we could close one curb cut off Big Beaver Road?
There is a chance of that, yes. That's something that we're going to have to discuss with them because...
Because those two curb cuts are so close together.
They are. That's, I mean, that's how I enter the campus every morning, and I can only imagine when you add a five or six-story building there, a very busy hospital there, what it's going to do to the traffic there. So we may have to talk about consolidating curb cuts, eliminating one, maybe even a traffic light, I don't know. Getting ahead of myself here because I haven't submitted an application, but...
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Okay, if the further questions or concerns, then we're going to have the go to number eight, the preliminary site plan review. File number SPO eight O dash D, as in David. Proposed Walsh College renovations in addition, east side of Liberoi, south of Waddles, thirty-eight, thirty-eight Liberoi, section twenty-two, currently zoned CF, Community Facilities District.
I apologize for this glitch. Can you? Yeah, let me set up. Apologize.
You're going to make the motion.
I'm going to try. You may ask for clarification, please. I have Alan Mooney and his magic fingers assisting. Sorry about that. My technical expertise tells me it's batteries, so we'll see. Walsh College, Walsh College has submitted an application for an expansion and a renovation of the existing facility, which is located on the east side of Liberoi, north of Zion Church, which is actually north of Town Center Drive. The existing zoning is, as Mr. Krenn indicated, is CF, Community Facility. You can hit the next slide. And you see that it's surrounded on the north, and the south, on the east and on the west sides, by single-family residential, and there's also a portion of the north its own neighborhood node. I'm not going to go into great detail on this application because we, at the last planning commission meeting, Ben did a relatively thorough job presenting, and then representatives of Larrabul Train and Walsh College also spoke, so I don't want to, you know, go over this in too much detail. If I miss anything, I'm relatively confident that Walsh College is going to be happy to fill in the blanks, but they're proposing an expansion. Really, in terms of footprint, it's only one thousand two hundred square feet per footprint, but what the renovation project does is that it, there's some conversion involved, and the first, the well-sourced area is going to be a fully functional two-story space, and it's going to provide additional student area, administrative office area, and a new forty-person auditorium. As Mr. Krenn indicated, the application did require some variances by the zoning board of appeals. It required a ten-foot variance to the twenty-five-foot maximum building height. It required a five-foot, five-point-one-five-foot variance to the eighty-foot minimum setback allowance from the residential property to the north, and it required a four-foot variance to the thirty-five maximum allowed rooftop equipment screening structure height. So really, two variances were related to height, and one was for setback. The applicant did receive those variances from the ZBA on February eighteenth. The ZBA approved the variances with three conditions, and I'll read them. One, the owner, the applicant and owner of thirty-six eighty-four Liberoi is to develop a mutual agreeable landscape screening plan. Two, the landscape screening is to address the common east-west property line separating the properties. And three, the landscape screening plan is to be incorporated into an amended site plan for the planning commission. All these were completed, including the landscape agreement that's in your packet this evening. The application does meet, which the variances does meet all, all required heightened setback requirements. Photometric plan is met. They, in, if you, when you apply the parking standards on a technical basis, because of the expansion, they are technically sixty-three parking spaces short. However, if you go to the site at any time, you'll know that there's plenty of parking there. So what we're recommending is the planning commission approve a sixty-three space parking deviation as part of site plan approval. And when we put together the resolution, we forgot to put that in there, so we've got a new resolution in front of us that incorporates that. The, we find that the application is consistent with the provisions of the zoning ordinance. I think it's a fantastic project, and we recommend site plan approval.
Questions? Mr. Seppert, Mr. Schultz? I have a question about the resolution in front of us tonight. If you could clarify. Mr. Seppert? It says that we approve a reduction in the total number of required parking spaces to one thousand forty-eight when a total of eight hundred ninety-five is required. That's not a reduction.
I wrote this at, what time is it now?
Would you like those two numbers we...
I think they, I think they should probably be flip-flopped.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah. The person who wrote that is going to be severely punished.
I went to school a long time ago, but my addition subtraction still...
That's Canadian math, Mr. Schultz.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here, please?
The applicant is present.
Do we need her to speak?
Over there.
Yeah, it's not going to amplify, but it will pick up for the television.
I would love to stand here.
It's like...
Derek, keep going.
Will you want a specific drawing?
What I, all I would like to say is, first of all, my name is Stephanie Bershon. I'm the president and chief executive officer of Walsh College, and I want to thank you for considering our request today. You remember that on February eleventh, we joined you to share with you this project and our goals, which is really the, is ultimately about this reading experience, how we service our students, how we give them student-like activity, and at the same time improving our presence on Liberoi in a way that we hope you can be proud of. We were gratified by the kind words we got from the planning board as we left, and I'll tell you, we shared them with our trustees because we would like them to know how you feel, and we're here to answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Bershon? If not, this is not a public hearing, but if there are anyone in, anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this, they're certainly welcome to come forward at this time. If not, we'll bring it back to the table. Mr. Schultz?
Ready for a resolution, Mr. Chairman?
I'm ready.
Result, planning commission hereby approves a reduction on the total number of required parking spaces for the proposed Walsh College renovations in addition to nine hundred eighty-five when a total of one thousand forty-eight spaces are required on the site based on the off-street parking requirements for post-secondary schools and auditoriums. This sixty-three space reduction meets the standards of section thirteen dot O six, and be it finally resolved, the preliminary site plan approval pursuant to article eight of the zoning ordinance, as requested for the proposed Walsh College renovations and addition located on the east side of Liberoi, south of Waddles at thirty-eight thirty-eight Liberoi in section twenty-two within the Community Facility District is granted.
Mr. Strad, please. Second.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strad?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready to move on. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Now ready to move on to agenda item number nine, conditional rezoning request. This is a public hearing, conditional rezoning application, file number CR O one one, proposed Amber Town Center townhouses and lots, west side of Liberoi, north of Town Center at thirty-four O nine Liberoi, section twenty-one from O Office District to BB, Big Beaver District.
The planning commission, commission may recall, you heard, the last time you heard this item, it was a traditional rezoning application, and on December tenth, the planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning of the property from O Office District to BB, Big Beaver Zoning District. The item, the rezoning, went before city council January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, and it was denied by city council. So the applicant came back, has come back with a conditional rezoning application. You'll recall, concurrent with the application for the rezoning, the applicant submitted a site plan that was five, proposed to be five stories and sixty-one feet in height as part of the conditional rezoning application, and I want to stress, the site plan packet is a condition of the rezoning. So everything on the site plan is basically a picture's worth of a thousand words, right? I mean, that's the conditions that are proposed. They've lowered the height of the building to fifty feet and four stories, so they took a story off, and they've done some other minor site improvements, but site plan is, does represent the conditions that are proposed. So the, if the planning commission recommends approval of the conditional rezoning and approves the site plan, then it's ultimately, the conditional rezoning is ultimately approved by city council, those conditions run with the project. So there's assurances there that what you see is what you get. If there's any significant modifications that are proposed, it's got to come back to the planning commission for public hearing and go back to the process again. So one of the concerns of, that was brought up by the neighbors was uncertainty, that although, although it appeared that the applicant was in good faith moving forward with the apartment, with the townhouse and lot application, there's nothing stopping them or a future buyer or owner to do something else. So this, this really does control, control the future development of the property, and it has been volunteered as required by law, volunteered by the applicant. So the property is located at Liberoi, on the west side at the northwest corner of Liberoi and Town Center. It's one point two-three acres, next slide. It's zoned O Office, and property to the north, and to the west is also Office, to the south is CF. You see that to the north and west are existing office buildings. To the CF, to the south is a park, and south of that is the Troy Community Center, and to the east across Liberoi, there's some, there's some homes and some vacant property and its own single-family residential. In terms of the master plan, the site is designated in the master plan as being BB, Big Beaver, Big Beaver Road, and this designation promotes higher density, vertical integrated mixed-use development, mixed-use commercial office and residential uses. The plan encourages increased residential units along and in proximity to Big Beaver, and it does also, it does intimate that the development of residential units should be designed with a strong orientation toward the roadway corridor to support pedestrian activity and help to frame the street. What I think this is going to help do is really kind of create a gateway, help to create a gateway with a large iconic building to travelers that are entering the Civic Center campus on Troy Center from the east. In terms of development potential, the city has an abundance of land that's presently zoned O Office. There's a vacancy rate of about thirty percent, so it does appear unlikely that with this, with this existing zoning that it's going to be developed as an office building anytime soon. So it does, from an economic standpoint, it does appear to make sense to go forward with this conditional rezoning. The, could you go to the site plan, try? The one that's probably the most effective has got some color, that one right there. The proposed building is, as I indicated, is oriented towards the southeast corner of the site. The parking goes along the north and to the west. The building is to be placed, it's about fifty-four feet from the northern edge of the building to the northern property line. It's located, it's located approximately sixty-seven feet and a hundred and ten feet from the office buildings to the north, and it's approximately three hundred and fifty feet from the nearest single-family residential home to the north. And I note there's, again, there's two entrances on Town Center, and there's a cross-access connection with the property to the north. The application complies with area width and heights and setback requirements of the Big Beaver District, and it meets the parking requirements for the district. And it, layout of the site and design of the building complies with the Big Beaver design standards, including facade variation, pedestrian access, and ground story activation. The applicant provided a photometric plan that complies with the photometric requirements. And the applicant has provided four plans and elevations. Obviously, these are the elevation drawings. The architecture complies with the Big Beaver Form Based standards, including the use of material changes, projections, facade articulation, and fenestration of windows. The architecture provides architectural detail as well as changes in horizontal and vertical scaling, variations in material, pattern, and color to provide that ground story activation. So in terms of recommendation, we recommend approval of the proposed conditional rezoning application for the following reasons. One, the request complies with the master plan. Two, the Form Based district would permit greater flexibility in use and development of the property. Three, the abundance of Office District property in the city has been well documented. Four, the rezoning would be compatible with surrounding zoning and land use. Five, the site can be adequately served with municipal water and sewer. And six, the condition of the site plan, as part of the conditional rezoning, alleviates potential concerns of future development of the site, and we also recommend approval of the site plan as submitted.
Questions for Mr. Seppert? Any final questions? Mr. Krenn?
A quick ones. Are there any requirements for, in that Big Beaver, for open space? In other words, and does this site plan meet that, those requirements?
There is a requirement for fifteen percent open space, and this application meets that requirement.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Seppert? Perhaps Mr. Seppert could also explain that the, from the previous design that was submitted, the number of units has changed? I don't think I heard you mention that.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. It's a great point. The, the site plan that was submitted originally included sixty, six-zero, units, and as part of that, the reduction in height that I indicated, the number of units has been reduced by fourteen units to forty-six units. So there's a, there's a density decrease as well as a height and mass decrease, excuse me.
I'm going to follow up on the, on the density, then. Roughly, we've got forty-six units in one point two-three acres. That's about a density of twenty, sorry, about forty units per acre. Do we have any other area in Troy? I know that the Grand Sacra Midtown is about twenty units per acre. Do we have anything close to forty units per acre in the city, do you know of, or...
We've got, I got your message today.
Okay.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the heads up.
Well, it was quite late in the day.
It was late in the day, and I didn't have time to put a lot of time into it, but I had a chance of research, too, that kind of came to mind as comparables. The Oakland Park Towers, number two, on John R. Road, section thirty-six, is a, has a density of about twenty-eight point four units per acre, and the existing zoning district at the time was RM three, which permitted up to thirty-five units per acre maximum. The Regent's Park Development, which is in section twenty-nine, which is just a little bit south of Big Beaver, off of Butterfield, that was, at the time when that was approved, was RM two, which allowed a density of up to twenty-four units per acre, and they built sixteen point four units per acre. The, and this is, this is off the top of my head, the, there's a third one, the Rochester Commons PUD... The Rochester Commons PUD at the northeast corner, well, a little bit off the corner, of Rochester and Big Beaver, which are townhomes, those are, that's at about sixteen, sixteen units per acre.
Is that the brick and park?
No, it's, it's, it's on, it's...
Behind fire station.
Behind the fire station, behind the park on the corner. That's at about sixteen units. So this, the math on this one is, you're, it's close to forty, it's thirty-seven point four units per acre, forty-six units by one point two-three acres. So it's a, it's, it's a little bit higher than the highest, the highest density residential district before we, before we comprehensively rewrote our zoning orders.
And the traffic studies say that we can support that density at that location? I realize there's not that many in a total. If there was a thousand units at, at forty units per acre, I could see, there's a huge problem, but we're talking basically forty-six families moving in.
This was reviewed by our engineer and our traffic engineer, and neither one of them raised, raised concerns of, of traffic being an issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just an informational one.
Mr. Shaw?
Though the property is currently a Livernoy address, since these units are basically going to front Town Center, are they going to be addressed as Town Center Drive or as Livernoy? Do we know? There's no driveway on Livernoy. There's no way to get to the property off Livernoy.
I'm going to guess they're going to be addressed off Town Center.
I would think so. Or else it's going to be A, B, C, D, E, F.
Actually, I think there is an entrance for the loft off of Livernoy. We're going to have the applicant explain that.
I won't see a curb cut.
A pedestrian, you're talking about pedestrian?
Pedestrian entrance.
Pedestrian entrance. That's usually not how we address buildings.
Right. Mr. Strapp?
Yeah, I was just going to say, typically, the building department makes their determination.
Yes.
So I, I know that when I develop my condo, they, they establish what the addresses were going to be and where it's going to be.
The planning department involvement in addressing is nil. Thankfully.
Mr. Shaw?
Just, I just want to make sure I understand it. Is that cross parcel access going to allow access to those units from Livernoy?
It will, it'll, it's, it's going to be reciprocal, and it's going to, I'm going to point here, so it's, you're going to be, people are going to be able to, to basically enter and exit onto that property from the property to the north. That's, that's a reciprocal cross-access agreement that was put in place when that, when the office buildings to the north were developed, the cross-access was in place, and basically when, there'll be a cross-access easement on this property. So it's going to be reciprocal. Not only are residents and visitors to the apartment going to be able to utilize the property to the north, visitors to the office buildings and employees of the office buildings will be able to utilize this property. It's going to be reciprocal. What it's going to do is it's going to eliminate, forcing people to, who want to, who want to, who are in the office building, want to go on Town Center, they're going to be able to, rather than have to go on Livernoy and then make, make that, go back on a major road, they're going to be able to make that maneuver.
Mr. Shaw? Just to clarify, Brent, the cross-access to the, on the property to the north was, in fact, enacted when those buildings were built, correct?
Correct.
So the only agreement that has to be reached here is an agreement with the petitioner now, because the cross-access already existed.
On the property to the north. Someone has to go first.
And those property owners knew that ultimately that would be a cross-access point.
I would assume so, but that's, was the intent of the cross-access.
Mr. Strapp?
Yeah, that's something that regardless of what was built there, it will have a cross-access agreement. And that is done for safety reasons, as well as backing up semi-trucks or whatever, or fire, or whatever. Then that's something that we have actually enacted for years now.
A dozen of those.
There are hundreds of these in the city.
Yes, right.
Okay. No further questions? I think we'll ask, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing now, and just the applicant, present please.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Dennis Allen.
Just speak into that microphone, or just pull the microphone around.
All right, there we go.
It's only for the tape.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, Dennis Allen, Plunkett Cooney here on behalf of Amber Properties. We did try to apply for frequent flyer miles with the Planning Commission, but there's no form on the website. So saying that, I, I do want to thank you for your patience, your indulgence, your attention to our various plans. I think Brent has covered the details rather well. Mr. Amber and Amber Properties, I'd like to emphasize, has listened through this process. Maybe we didn't listen soon enough, but nevertheless, we listened. We listened at your meetings here, we listened when we met with our commercial and residential neighbors, we listened to the City Council, we listened to the concerns which were brought to the City Council. We believe we have addressed every concern that has been mentioned, and still make this a viable and economically feasible project. Because at the end of the day, you can build anything, but if it's not feasible, then it's a failure. And I know Troy prides itself on having successful projects. So we believe that particularly with the decrease in density, with the entire floor being removed, and by the way, those are all the studio apartments. That was the biggest concern we had about the, the mix, was the studio apartments. And that entire floor has been eliminated. So we've increased the green belt, we not only meet, but we exceed the green space. We're at sixteen point six-seven percent. We believe we've brought a better project forward. We thought the first project was good, and it was within the confines of the zoning district, but we believe this is a, a better and enhanced project, addressing the concerns that we heard. Certainly, there's, you know, we were not aware when we first purchased the property, but found out shortly thereafter about the cross-access agreement. We learned when we discussed with City Council that this is really a safety issue, the police and fire really requested. Will there be some possible driving back and forth? Yes, but it cuts both ways. If somebody's coming downtown Center Drive and wants to go to the medical office buildings, they can cut through. So we believe at the end of the day, that's not going to be a major problem based on experience that we've had in Royal Oak and Claussen with the traffic in and around by our residents. So again, we're here to answer any questions. I know that Mr. Amber will have some concerns at the, the end of the public hearing. But again, we want to thank you. We think we've got a, a real winner here, a good project for Troy, and we thank you for your previous support, and we request your support again this evening. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? I do have one. I noticed that, I don't know if the public has seen these site plans, I had a line of site plans that we just briefly showed up on the board. Could, could you go through that?
I'll have, if Jason Weaver from SHW could come up. I believe that they're on the, the disc.
They're on the agenda, but I don't think the public...
Okay.
And the reason I didn't go over these was because, Mr., if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
These are distributed at the last meeting, and I didn't want to sound redundant, but it's a good question.
I understand that I need to speak from here, but makes it harder to...
You have to speak in the microphone.
Makes it hard to point at a drawing from this distance.
If he speaks loudly, he should be able to stand at the screen.
There's a microphone there, can you speak loudly enough?
Thank you. Thank you for having us back. Justin Weaver, project architect, project manager, SHW. The drawing in front of you is the line of sight from the building looking towards the residences. This is one of the concerns that was raised, is, is what is the visibility? And what happens when the office buildings are between you? Well, we also studied in the section, looking at a balcony on the second floor and a terrace on the fourth level. On the second floor, you see that the first medical office building is cutting off view to this building. On the terrace level, we can see past, we do have trees in this section. We did light line the other building beyond, we looked at the sidelines, but it's not possible to sit at this building and look over this building. The line of sight just does not allow for you to go to look down into a yard. If you go to the next you? Or if there's any questions on this?
The other way.
This drawing is line of sight from the residences towards the building. Again, we, we did a cross-cut through the site, through the site. It's approximately three hundred and forty-five feet from the back of the building to the first residence. And as you see again, between trees and buildings, the line of sight to the building is cut off, but the height of the building is now under the line of sight that's provided by the cut-off of the medical office buildings. Any questions on this here?
Is that, that the residents up there?
Residents to the side, medical office buildings.
Right.
As we cut through. If we can pull up the renderings.
Is it other amber?
Yeah. It worked?
The next one's the next jig, I think.
No.
That's all right.
Would you like us to bring a hard copy up?
We saw it at the last meeting.
We saw it.
You've got hard copies now?
Yes, I do.
If anyone wants to see the rendering, you've got it.
Maybe you could delineate what has changed from this building, the exterior materials and, and I know I was pleased, there are more, there's more brick on the north side.
Sometimes it's easier with the picture. So we do have both renderings, we have front and rear. I'll wait for the images to be passed around. There's two separate renderings, there's the front and rear elevations. From the, from the neighborhood, we looked around, there's very rich brick. And so we, we're playing with the brick. There's, there's two colors of brick, there's a house dent unit and an indent unit, it's kind of in terms of we've developed with, developing the rhythm. Amber has their own portfolio of materials, which is brick, it's a metal siding, there's a mesh railing. We worked with those, working with the area, we pulled the brick up on the rear elevation to the highest point we can, and it comes up to the underside of the mesh, or the guardrails.
Do you want to hand this to the audience and see if they'd like to see what they look like? I think it's more important that they see it than us.
So there's abundant materials working with residential scale, windows are in residential scale, the terraces are in residential scale. Everything on this is, is of the residents, of the pedestrian. The first two levels on Town Center, it provides an open level of glazing, giving to more of that storefront, that, that urban feel. But yet, we're still playing in the residential. And this is actually working with the pedestrian activation requirements of the Troy zoning code, and that's why there's that much glazing.
Can you tell us where the split in the units are vertically?
The split in the unit? Okay. So if you're looking at, three stories up is the town house, or town home. The first floor is a two-car garage with a den in the front. We have a living room and kitchen on the second floor, and then two bedrooms plus two baths on the third floor. We then go to the loft level, which is a loft with a mezzanine above.
So is each slot, if you will? How many units is in that slot?
If I may. The best way to look at that is in this portion. We have a town home and town home, then we have a loft that caps it off. So it's a double bay up at the top, single bay for the first three floors.
Okay. Now the parking down below?
Yes. Two-story, or two-car garages along the way. We also have a barrier for units.
The two cars belong to which units?
They belong to the town home.
Okay.
And it's interior entry from that.
Okay. So the lofts are parked outside.
The lofts are parked outside, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Now we'll go to the audience.
Hello. I'm Dr. Craig Golden. My wife and I are the owners and occupants of the medical dental building immediately north of the proposed rezoning. This is my third time speaking to city officials regarding this. I once again request that the proposed rezoning not be allowed. As previously discussed, I feel that the Troy Master Plan, which was designed years ago, no longer fits into the existing landscape of this area that is present today. This single parcel does not belong as part of the Big Beaver Plan. It is surrounded by single-story offices and residential homes. A four-story building, this four-story building has no place, given the makeup of the surrounding properties. It is my understanding the master plan is to be revised in the near future. I request that this discussion be tabled until after any revisions to the master plan are done. We have a postage-stamped area called Big Beaver, surrounded by offices. This rezoning would allow a very large building to be built immediately next to my property. I'm greatly concerned about my patients and the patients of the medical building behind me, this gentleman right here, being able to find our practices. As an enormous building is going to block the view of our offices from the street. It's considerably, the fact that you've made the setback different, being Big Beaver corridor, bringing it further forward, is a challenge to view our properties. I'm also extremely concerned that the potential problems which will be created in regards to traffic and parking. Any potentially a hundred or more cars navigating in and out of that area daily will create increases in traffic, particularly during rush hour. There's no way around that. How somebody, how your, your, your traffic engineers are saying it won't make a difference, I, I respectfully disagree. The apartment building will add to backups to turn left at Town Center Drive. Okay? Now that I've seen the, how the easement, now I, I've understood that there has been an easement, by the way, parking, a parking easement, parking lot easement, and I know that. But at the time that I knew that, I also knew that I was going to get an office building to my south, not a residential area. And there's a distinct difference. The backups that are going to be created turning left on Town Center Drive is going to encourage patient, residents to pass the light, turn left into my parking lot, drive through my parking lot, and utilize the required parking easement to gain access into their property. Now you suggested that this is a, this is a likewise burden. My patients are going to be happy to go down that easement, go into Amber, go, go around a building, by the way, so that, drive in and out and around a building so that they can get access to Town Center? Let's face it, that's ridiculous. If you guys were looking for, you're going to a medical office, and you would be looking for an office on Livernoy, you're going to take the main streets. There's no way you're going to go out of your way to go, turn left on Town Center Drive. So I respectfully disagree about being equally burdened by this parking, by this parking easement. The potential of injury to our patients due to the increased traffic is high. We're going to get a lot of traffic coming in because people are going to love to utilize Livernoy access, and it's going to come right down in front of my office or in front of Michael's office, and people potentially get injured. We have elderly people coming in and out of our offices. They're not necessarily moving fast. fast. While ample parking, what may be present for the residents living at the proposed site, there is not adequate parking for any other guests. The only place guests are likely to park in my parking lot, which is immediately adjacent. The increase in traffic and parking will burden us with substantially increased maintenance costs to our parking lot. It is not an even burden. The burden will be on us. The burden of the increase we're into on our parking lot, and people parking in our lot is going to be on us. There's not too many people for my, that are patients of mine or his, that are going to go through and go around, zip around a building to get out, so they can go onto Town Center Drive. It's not going to happen. The economy is just turning around. I have no doubt that other developers would be interested in building additional office space or medical office space at this proposed site. This was shown to be true at our last meeting on this subject. Somebody came in here and they wanted, people want to buy that site, and they want to develop it. The City of Troy seems insistent on pushing this development through. If this is the intent, the proposed apartment building is still way too large. Two stories tall should be the maximum allowed, and plenty of parking should be provided for residents as well as their guests. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I'm Michael, formerly the owner of the OMBT Specialist, which is the first building to the north of the proposed plan, the 3-4, 3-5 Livernoys. And I agree with Dr. Golden what he said, but I want to add a couple more things. Not only is it difficult to turn to our parking lot, but if you're coming from the south end of Livernoy, trying to make a left turn to our parking lot, it's right after the traffic signal. It takes only one or two cars in the center lane to wait until the traffic that's coming from the north or going south clears, so they can make the left turn. Imagine if you're adding more traffic of those residents. And according to Amber Group, I heard that their target are the young professionals, which in an essence will scare a little bit the way they drive maybe to our seniors. I have tons of seniors patients coming with surgeries, and to ask them to go around the building, go to Civic Center Drive, go around the building, go again to our parking lot, it's a hassle. And when we started the businesses in '09, I believe when we did the buildings, we knew that this lot is zoned as an office building. So now you're changing this to four-story building to be an apartment, it just, it's going to increase the burdens that hide our buildings. It will be super hard for our patients to see it. So I don't know if the plan got approved, if there is any arrangements even can be done about the signage for all these patients. Like where are those buildings, the medical buildings, that got hidden behind that big apartment complex? If the traffic can be improved or changed, I don't know. Or if you can open an extra lane even at Civic Center Drive. It just doesn't make sense that you have all this traffic going through one lane, or ask them to get in a center lane and use our parking lot to go into the building. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can you please remind us who should be signed?
Those who spoke, we should, have you already signed yet?
Yes.
Not knowing what. By the way, my name is Sanjay Shah, I live in Troy. I have prepared a rebuttal to this thing, and I'm not sure how the process works, but I'm assuming I'm allowed to pass on to each of you, so you guys can look at what I want to say. I'm assuming everybody has a copy, and I'm thankful for letting me speak. So first thing I wanted to point out is, in this picture, which everybody can see, is as my previous speakers also said the same thing. We are talking about a stamp-sized land with the rest of the area being zoned differently, completely differently. And I just, we don't understand why. Why it's so urgent to do a building like this and make it, make an ugly-looking structure, in my opinion, in that area, number one. Number two, when I attended several meetings, I was told that the council or the planning committee has to meet these sets of requirements to allow for or approve the zoning requirements or change of zoning. And what I see, in my opinion, and to many of the Troy residents I've spoken to, not necessarily living just next to that property, but all around, east, west, south, north, all the way from Big Beaver, Beach Road, College areas, about these conditions. So what my request to the planning committee is, that based on the laws or the boundaries required to meet the approval, if you can kindly look at those and make sure that we are following those to get the approval. Namely, it's not consistent with the current master plan, it's zoned as office, proposed zoning will cause non-conformity, which is one of the requirement, it's an isolated big structure, Town Center Drive is a single-lane drive, I use the library, I use the tennis courts, I go to aquatic centers, and it's a pain to come out of Town Center, to go left on Livernoy, or to make a turn to Livernoy, to the Town Center. It usually requires sometimes two to three signals to change the lanes or to make the turns. I cannot just understand a single-lane entry on Town Center, allowing us to have so many residential buildings and residential families using that spot. Obviously, traffic congestion has been pointed out, unsafe for pedestrians, and it's not compatible with adjusted use of land, which is one of the requirement of the planning commission or the planning board. So my request is that, that you guys at least look at those. Other two, couple of things I want to just make you aware, that one thing I heard was there is a lot of office space in the, in this Troy city, and hence, let's approve this so that we don't have to worry about developing that site. To my knowledge, there is a buyer out there who has offered more money than what Amber has offered for this property to build a medical office building. So there is an alternative. That's all I have to say. If you have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Questions for the company?
Where do you live?
I live on the Westwood Park subdivision, just north of the property.
Designated?
That's just my house, that's my house, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome. But I just want to make you aware, that when we did this go around for the first time, I had a petition started, where I had residents from all over Troy, not necessarily just in that vicinity, you know, east, west, north, south, who had agreed with us, saying that, yep, it does not belong here. So I just don't want to represent myself as a Westwood Park resident, but I want to represent myself as a Troy resident.
Mr. Chair?
I would like a clarification from our staff member. Is, did the speaker that just spoke correctly identify the district in blue?
I'm assuming that when it says "O" designation, I'm assuming that Mr. Shah is referring to zoning? Are you referring to zoning here?
Yeah.
This is actually incorrect, this drawing is actually incorrect. Basically, the "O" designation is, if you see my finger, it's just this finger of property here, and the balance of this site is Big Beaver. So it's actually, it's actually misrepresented, I don't think intentionally intended to do that, but it is misrepresented on this drawing.
Thank you.
Do you mind putting the Big Beaver plan or our picture up, so we can all see?
The master plan designation?
Yeah.
So, can I, am I allowed to ask a question? So are you saying that the place where the community center is, where the Troy tennis bubble is, the aquatic center is all on the Big Beaver plan, or is it under some other designation? That's what I'm showing in blue here.
Camera's not going to pick this up. Can you see this? This is the interchange to this portion here that's in red?
Yeah.
That's Big Beaver zoning district. This little portion in blue here is the office complex and the office development on the north side of Town Center. A little bit in pink to the south is the community center and the park, and the balance of that is Big Beaver.
That's according to the master plan.
That's the zoning ordinance. I asked you if it was zoning that you were referring to, and you indicated it was.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Chaitan Rastoghi, I live on the same subdivision as Sanjay. And we are not experts in the zoning and rezoning and all that, but be as it may, it seems very, almost impossible that something like a building is going to be built at the community center site, or at the tennis bubble, or next to the library, or right next to here. So if you really look at that, where that whole strip of land is zoned office, there's a very small portion that has been rezoned to BB, where this building is going to go. And, you know, in that subdivision where we are, and also north of us, there are a lot of children who ride their bikes down to the community center or the library, and we walk, and there's forty-six buildings, forty-six unit building, there's two cars, that's about ninety-plus cars. You know, that's, that's going to cause, it's already an issue, if somebody walks in the evening, it's already an issue to cross Town Center Drive. And, you know, with that much more traffic, it's definitely going to be a hazard. So I respectfully would request that this parcel remain office, and, you know, it seems that there is a buyer available, maybe, maybe an office building is, a medical office building or any other kind of office building is the right thing. And if there is an apartment to be put up, it should be much fewer units.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public area and bring it back to the planning commission for a discussion or a resolution. Mr. Hudson?
My office is a 2-9-2 Town Center Drive, in a building we built in 1985. We were the only building in that street at that time. Tennis bubble was next to us, it was all vacant land. Tanyan came in, put an office building in, Modern Engineering came in, which is now an engineering, a medical building, and the two doctors to the north put in their buildings. The only thing missing, in my opinion, was a residential apartment building or condominium. A lot of people don't want to own a home, but want access to community facilities. This is a beautiful spot, and that's what I'm missing. We've got walking distance to the library, to an aquatic center, to a tennis court, to a community services building, we have a great athletic exercise area, meetings. And I think this is a missing piece, and I'm all in favor, I think, I was in favor of the first plan by Amber's. This one's been reduced and modified, I think it's even better, and I think it's a great project, and I'm going to support it.
Mr. Schultz?
Just want to clarify a couple things. One of the statements was that the traffic engineer said that this would not have any effect on traffic. Traffic engineer would never have said that. Said that the, but his opinion would be that the road system is adequate to handle the volume of traffic that would increase with this development. He would never have said there would be no effect on traffic. And additionally, state law in Michigan affords every property owner the right to come before a board just like this one and request that any piece of property be rezoned. The city has to consider all valid rezoning requests, it's required under the law. I will support this, I think it's time for the City of Troy to have some alternative living accommodations to traditional colonial homes and conditional, or traditional town homes such as I live in. I, I think this is a good development, I think it's a good location, and the only other thing I'll say is, I've lived here for thirty years, and I have never, at Troy Center, at Livernoy and Town Center, had to wait three signal lights to get through an intersection, ever. And I spend a lot of time in the Civic Center, so that, if there are traffic problems, Livernoy will be, the signal at Livernoy will be adjusted by the Road Commission for Oakland County to accommodate the additional traffic, so I don't have a problem here.
Mr. Tagle?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on the last two comments that Mr. Schultz and Mr. Hudson said. I agree with what they're saying. One of the items that we tried to accomplish in the master plan was more walkability, more sustainability, and this project fits that as well. Also, when the 2020 study was done by the residents of the city, this is the kind of stuff that they wanted to see, and as was said, a different housing stock. We want to draw in younger people, young professionals, and again, the walkability that Mr. Hudson pointed out to the community activities within the complex here, I think, is a, is a real positive for this community that we don't have right now. So I think this is a very good development, and again, I'll be supporting it.
Mr. Craig?
This is for our planning director. Roughly, how many parking places are at the community center now? Just, I know, I just threw it out there, sorry I did this to you. Hundreds.
Hundreds.
Thank you. And we're talking maybe, how many, how many parking spots on this particular site plan? There's, there's obviously...
With handicapped, there's ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
That's including, that's counting the two bays in the town homes as parking, because they're going to be required to park in there.
So the amount of, and again, my thought is, these are homes, they are not like the communities. Community center's an ongoing, all-day-long traffic movement, even throughout the evenings, they have events all evening. So this would be, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I could see that during the middle of the day, you're not going to get a lot of traffic going on when, let's say, the medical buildings to the north are seeing their patients. I don't, you know, just, just from an empirical point of view, I don't see a huge traffic increase because of this particular situation. And one comment earlier said that it's going to block the view of my building. Any office building at this corner will block a view from an empty lot. I mean, that's, but it's not going to block a view going down Livernoy, in my opinion, at least.
What else? Mr. Kuyler?
Just for my own clarification, I just want to confirm that our business to staff, is there anything that the petitioner has not addressed that is not satisfactory, or I just want to confirm, our staff has viewed this and is recommending approval, is that accurate?
Yeah, you phrase that with like double negatives.
Sorry.
So if I say, if I say no, it means yes.
Are we having our staff?
I'll answer it this way.
Okay.
They, they made all of the requirements of the underlying zoning district.
BB.
BB, should, should the parcel be rezoned. So we're recommending preliminary site plan approval if it were to be rezoned at Big Beaver. Can I say one thing? Just, I've been here twelve years, and I, my recollection and, correct me if I'm wrong, but this property has been either a vacant home, I believe it was vacant when they started here, or it's been, it was raised years ago, or a vacant lot since I've been here twelve years. So there's probably an underlying kind of, everyone kind of accepts the fact that it's vacant, and it's always going to be vacant, and I don't think that's, that's realistic. And just keep in mind that the underlying zoning district is O Office, and that district does permit by right, a thirty-six-foot-high building, three-story thirty-six-foot-high building, with a ten-foot setback from Livernoy, and a twenty-foot side yard setback. So theoretically, this, this property could be located ten feet from Livernoy and twenty feet from the northern property line, thirty-six stories high, thirty-six feet high, excuse me, three stories high. So, and that's, whenever I haven't done the math and how, based on the, with open space and parking, whatnot, how many employees could work here? But it's, under existing zoning, there could be a significant development on this property that's going to generate traffic, that's going to have cross-access, that's going to, it's going to potentially have, you know... have, you know, curb cuts on Town Center. So, just, I guess I'm just kind of reminding people that by right today, under existing zoning, there could be something here that's relatively significant for, for this vacant site, this site that's been vacant for a long, long time.
Yes, Mr. Stratt.
I would just like to add on to what everybody else has said. I totally agree with it. Uh, and the property was heavily watered at that time, and, uh, couldn't see, and it didn't appear that it was going to be developable.
Did I say that right?
And anyway, I, I really am supportive of this. I think that's exactly what we want as a walking community, and we do want to have the younger people that come in to our community. And I, I'm looking at it from a total aspect of what I'd like to see and what was actually mentioned, as mentioned previously at some of the conferences that we had with all the city's residents. I'm totally supportive of this. We want walkability. We want the youth to be able to come in, and this excellent relocation for this, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I just have to concur with, or my fellow planning commissioners. What I was concerned about was the contract rezoning. I mean, they have an unlimited, limited height for the BB district, I thought was unreasonable. I think the applicant did a fabulous job on, on planning the site and, uh, meeting the conditions that we had imposed upon him, and I, and again, I, I think he did a fabulous job, and, uh, and I've seen his developments throughout Troy, Austin, and Royal Oak, and I, I, I'm sure, I'm confident that he'll do a good job. So I, I will support this also.
Do you have a statement, or? I do. Okay. I, I, I also would like to, uh, support this, uh, development. I think the, uh, Mr. Amber has gone beyond, uh, all expectations in terms of doing this. Uh, I think we need to understand if the Big Beaver zoning had gone through, even the first building, he didn't max it out to the height that he could have. And, uh, now, this is two stories lower.
It's longer.
Yeah, two stories, but two stories lower than the, than the, what the maximum was.
Yeah, I'll zip it. You're right.
So anyway, um, I, I, I will, I am happy to, uh, support this, uh, recommendation to the city council. Mr. Schultz.
You ready for a resolution, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Mr. Collins if he cared to permit, or comment on the, what some of the residents, or some of the residents have said about another offer that was more than his offer. Uh, I wonder if somebody could explain that this was a conservatorship, and this other offer, you know, what, did he fail to meet certain requirements with the court, or how was that?
It's been a while, but, uh, since I was in the pro big court, there were, uh, two offers, and the conservator had to go before the court with those two offers, and our offer was chosen by the judge. The judge made it very clear that he made the decision. It was a recommendation of the conservator, and that is what has occurred, and we're following through on that, uh, opportunity as granted to us by the presiding court judge, Daniel Wright.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for a resolution.
Before I read the resolution, I'd like to make one last comment. That is, I believe I was the dissenting vote on the last recommendation to city council, because I could not support it because it would have opened the property should this development have never been put up to the standard zoning within the Big Beaver district. I'm very pleased that the petitioner came back with a, uh, conditional rezoning, and I certainly hope that city council will share our vision and see that it's time for Troy to provide some new housing stock. Therefore, be it resolved, the planning commission hereby recommends to city council that the O to BB conditional rezoning request, which incorporates preliminary site plan approval as per section sixteen dot oh four of the city of Troy zoning ordinance, located on the west side of Livernoy, north of Town Center, thirty-four oh nine Livernoy, within section twenty-one, being of approximately one point two-three acres in size, be granted.
I'll second.
You ready for the vote?
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Godley?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Jay?
Yes.
Our goal now, just for those in the audience, is to have an announcement of public hearing for city council on April, April seventh, next Monday, and then a public hearing by city council, April fourteenth, seven-thirty. April fourteenth, seven-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Good night.
April fourteenth, there's any other comment during this?
Yes. City council.
It happens to be a Jewish holiday. I won't be able to be there. I should be there.
You're certainly welcome. Mr. Godley, it's ready.
Follow-up question. So now he'll have to, uh, will he have to reset his site plan?
No.
His site plan approval?
No, this was, this was site plan approval.
The site plan is part of the conditional resolution.
Okay.
I think the site plan is the result.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're ready to move on to the, um, next item, which is item number ten, the planning commission bylaws, the provisions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so the last, uh, the last meeting, you asked me what the status was on the, uh, on the, on the bylaws. We, we had discussed it, uh, and taken planning commission comment, and, uh, what I did is, uh, after the meeting, is I made sure that I had addressed all the comments that we talked about, and then, uh, got on this agenda, pushed forward in an expedited fashion. Perhaps too expedited? Because, uh, I, I had not, I did not receive, uh, the full, all the, all the comments from the city attorney when I, when I put them on the agenda. So, so what I did is I added, so what, what I'm suggesting we do is, is we have, we have the markups that, the, the, the penultimate marked-up copy, um, following, uh, following review of the, of the city attorney, and this, this has been distributed to you, and Alan will just really briefly summarize the comments that, the most, the most recent comments. I will say that, so when we talked about this at the, the last meeting, um, we added four, four, changed four provisions. One is we updated the, uh, the order of business to be consistent with present planning commission practice. We, uh, allowed for voice votes for non-business items. We provided the chairperson the authority to ask for reasons for no votes, and we required members to adhere to the city of Troy appointee code of ethics that all of you have to sign. So those are changes we made. And then, what Alan, I asked Alan to, to do is just really briefly summarize some of the, some of the pertinent provisions that are going to, that they're recommending we change. Let you go home, go home and digest these, and at the next meeting, we'll come back and talk about it, possibly adopt. Okay, fair?
The, uh, copy you have in your hand is the most recent changes made by our office are, I believe that's purple. Like, I don't know, I'm not good with colors, but like, if you look at page two, you see the word four, whatever color that is.
Yep, got it.
If you see that color anywhere else, those are the most recent changes. Uh, most of the changes, a lot of them are just grammatical, for, like, pa, on page two, that's a grammatical change. Uh, if you go to the page, uh, the next changes are, page four, a lot of them, again, are grammatical. Uh, one of the points on, uh, page four is that the Roberts rules are really just a guide. Uh, they don't have to be, it's not, it's not mandatory. You can follow Roberts rules, but that's a guide. One of the keys we wanted to make sure is that there's compliance with the Open Meetings Act, so that's mentioned a couple of times in the changes. Uh, if you go to page five, uh, it's not our call, if you look at section six, to really make the call whether something is exempt from the Open Meetings Act. It's really the, the planning commission should make that call based on advice by the city attorney, uh, but, uh, and then pass an appropriate resolution that you need to go in closed session, but, and all the time I've been here, the planning commission's never went into closed session.
Never has.
So it's not, it's probably not even a big deal, but that was the point we made. The, the voting, if, really, these are grammatical changes in section seven to page five. Uh, saying the same thing, just using different language. Uh, page six, uh, we thought there are some portions where it was too vague to give responsibility to the planning department, that we thought it should be more specific, and, and the planning director and his or her designation actually be responsible for certain things. And, uh, let's see. Oh, page seven, uh, postponing a meeting. The city attorney thought it was important that we make sure if we postponed, that it be postponed to either a specific date or upon the occurrence of a specific event, uh, such as, uh, sometimes we ask that you meet with the neighbors or something, uh, bringing it back to, after you meet with the neighbors, and then the planning, uh, department or could decide or bring it back to the table once they know that event has occurred. Uh, let's see. Uh, there was one change that the city attorney wasn't made, and I don't remember what page it's on, but it has to do, the planning commission suggested last time that maybe we should have just a voice vote on certain items, and then have the roll call vote only on more substantive. Uh, long story short, our city attorney did not like that idea. She thought we should just continue doing the roll call votes. Uh, but as she pointed out, that, this, these are our recommendations. That's ultimately the planning commission's call if they want to, uh, to reject by law. Uh, because so many things, there are so many occasions when we need to know the specific votes and reasons with regard to the planning commission, that it would be, uh, better, better to always have a roll call vote, and I know on some things it isn't just minor, but, uh, again, that's, that was the city attorney's opinion. One of the things that Lori, the city attorney, looked at when she saw the proposal for having a voice vote on some things was, there was no definition as to what constituted procedural matter as opposed to a non-procedural matter. And she said, so if you're going to do that, you're probably going to have to add more bylaws defining what's a procedural matter and, and what's a substantive matter. And, so it was just easier just to, to, to.
That's what happens when we get attorneys.
Yes.
With that being said, like, like Alan said, they're your bylaws. So, I mean, some of the attorney had to say, and that's her recommendation, makes sense, but at the same time, procedurally, I think the way it would probably play out is, the, the chairman would say, well, can we have a voice vote, and if there's any confusion at, at all, the chairman's going to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to do a road, we're going to do a roll call vote for the record, so it's clear. So that's probably what would happen, but that probably should be explained in here. So whatever you want to do, we'll do. It's...
Which way is it presented in the bylaws?
Rotating vote.
Rotating roll call. Right now, it's rotating roll call, and as, as in this draft, rotating roll call. So it's the way it is now.
First paragraph of page four.
It's up to you, whatever you want to do. We'll, we'll make the changes, your bylaws. It's, this is not the hill I will die on. Whatever you want to do.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is... I've been on several committees, and this is the only committee that I'm aware of. It requires a roll call vote for, if you're present at a meeting or if you're approving an agenda. And I would agree, or could not agree, but I, I wouldn't disagree with, with the city attorney, but I think if you were to call for a roll call vote if it was required, I think that would be adequate. And so I would, I would recommend that we go with a, leave it up to the, the chairman if we should be roll call or a voice vote.
Any other comments? My only comment is, there may be a problem. You know, we may end up with even longer bylaws if we go with this procedural thing, because we're going to have to specify which items are procedural. Uh, yeah, I guess, I'm, I guess, maybe I'm just a traditionalist, but it's always been done this way. And it, I guess, how much time are we going to save? Kathy calls this role, you know, very expeditiously and efficiently. I, I would tend to agree with the city attorney, but we can discuss that later. Mr. Craig?
I just want to concur with your thoughts. I mean, a roll call vote is no more than thirty seconds, maybe fifteen seconds, considering our meetings go beyond an hour usually. Another fifteen seconds or thirty seconds, I don't think it's going to make any difference.
Mr. Schultz.
I think it was when I was chairman, I can't remember. It's been a long time. It was proposed that we not read resolutions also to save time, and for the, I, I personally, and I understand their meetings are much longer than ours, but when I'm watching a city council meeting on television, and they say, I move the resolution as written, I have no idea what they're right, what they're voting on. And I think for the few moments it takes to read a resolution short of the PUD resolutions that run two, three, and four pages, in that case, I say, I'm prepared. But, uh, I just don't think it saves that much time. Our meetings don't run till midnight anymore, and, and they did at one point. And it would be nice if we had enough development in the city that they did then develop at night again. And we had to have three meetings on, but, uh, hopefully those days will return. But I don't have a problem with the roll call vote, and I definitely don't have a problem with the reading of resolutions.
Anyone else?
I just, just for the record, I, I, I don't feel strongly either way. It's just a recommendation. So if we, uh, we maintain the roll call vote, I'm sure they wouldn't, I wouldn't object to that.
Well, again, as, as Brad said, this will be brought back at the next meeting for, hopefully at that time, a resolution.
Yeah, it's definitely time. It was due for a, for a look.
Thank you. Okay, number eleven is the public comment. Items on the current agenda, seeing no one in the audience. Uh, we go to number twelve, planning commission comments. And, uh, let's start with Mr. Godley tonight.
It was an interesting meeting. I enjoy, uh, the opportunity to hear from the residents, but it was interesting to hear from a resident, or building owner adjacent to the property, and acknowledge that, that was, uh, well-liked. So, but, other people said the same thing, by the way, than I spoke to.
Mr. Tagle.
Nothing.
Mr. Stratt? Mr. Schultz?
I do have a comment this evening. Since the last meeting of the planning commission, there's been a slight change in my reality. Uh, starting tomorrow morning, I will become a part-time employee of the city of Troy, and the city clerk has determined that city employees cannot serve simultaneously on the planning commission. So last Friday, I turned my resignation into the mayor. He accepted it today, and this will be my last meeting after almost twelve years on the planning commission. So thank you.
It's been twelve years.
It has been a joy. I have enjoyed every minute of it, including the three years of meetings I attended before I got on the planning commission. And, uh, you'll probably see my ugly mug in the, in the, uh, audience from time to time, making sure you guys are doing everything right.
I think I'll put out five new signs on my front here.
What position you made.
What position we be?
Yeah, what do you do to do? I will be, the official job title will be code enforcement officer for the Department of Public Works.
You're a perfect candidate.
I'll tell, I'll tell you after tomorrow what that means.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, very good, Bob.
Any comments for you, Mr. Zanzika?
No comment.
I just want to say it's been great working with Mr. Schultz all these years. He always has great opinions, great insight, and, uh, however, I may still be working with him. I may see you in court now. But anyway, other than that, no other comments. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Schultz, we all certainly miss you, and, uh...
Thank you.
Certainly respect your tenure here, and, uh, we wish you well in your new position.
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, you've been a fantastic planning commission member. I've really liked it. Uh, my only regret is you're not working for me. That would have been, that would have been great.
Actually, during the, during the interview, I, uh, I was asked...